And item number one is a discussion of Mardi Gras issues.
All right, I'm gonna pass these out to y'all. I think Chief is gonna also chime in when she gets here.
Thank you.
So I let y'all know a while ago that we have yet to update our City of Fairhope Parade Rules and Regulations since 93, so that puts us at the 30-year mark of updating, so we thought it would be time to bring this to y'all for consideration, to make some changes. So, we met internally between Public Works, the Fairhope Police Department, my department, and the Civic Center folks, to kind of put forth our recommendations, which the first page, what you'll see, is what our present rules are. If you skip all the way to the back, I have attached our recommendations highlighted in yellow. Basically, one of the first things you'll see is that we would like to change the 30 days, which most parade organizations are good with, getting their applications in on time, but we would like to change that across the board. When we have permitting fees for streets or parks, it's usually a 90-day prior to. So cleaning that up and changing that across the board to 90 days. We do have in there no parades on Sundays, and we also wanted to ask for y'all's comments about rain dates, if that ever were to come up. In years past, we have, it says in our parade rules currently, that we would make every effort to make the parade, between the police coordinator and the Public Works Department, to reschedule. Our thoughts on that, it really makes that hard when our ordinance states that we can have one parade per week, so we put on here no rain dates, and obviously, it's all up for discussion and to see what y'all's recommendations are on that. If you scroll down, or if you go down to the next paragraph for the parade fees, so currently, our parade fees for them to pull permits for the City of Fairhope is $2,500 to cover the cost of the police personnel and the Public Works Department overtime. Right under that, it states that it can be waived by the Fairhope City Council for homecoming, Fourth of July, and Christmas parades. So right now, you know, kind of pulling some numbers between the Fairhope Police Department and the Public Works Department, just to give y'all a little bit of information about how much overtime is costing the city internally, just in case y'all do, you know, we have put in there that we may want to do like a step, like a step up each year. I don't know kind of what y'all's thoughts are on increasing that parade permit fee, but right now, on average, and Shane, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Fairhope Police Department, overtime per parade's about $8,000, and the Public Works Department, overtime per parade's And again, our parade permit fee is $2,500 and hasn't been increased in 30 years. So we thought, you know, maybe an incremental increase, or, you know, just kind of seeing y'all's thoughts or comments on that, per se.
Let me stop you for a minute, Paige.
Yeah, go ahead.
And the parade fee, is it not true that some of these are designated as nonprofits, and so then they get that fee cut in half?
Not for the parade permit fee.
Not for the parade permit?
So they get it cut in half for the Civic Center rental?
For the rentals, for the Civic Center rentals, they do have a nonprofit rate that they will get 50% off for that. But for the parade permit fee, it's across the board, I don't believe there's any kind of discount on that.
Okay.
Now, fees do get waived for, like, our sponsorship and partnership with the Haven, those fees have been waived, and that's also on y'all's packet. There's a resolution on there that was passed in 2020, I believe, that states that the Haven is, the fees are waived, you know, until any changes are made.
Why is there a fee even listed for, it says for the Christmas parade? I mean, that's a city event, right?
Correct.
There could be a difference, it was before, but it wasn't a city event.
It was not at one time? I guess in 93? Okay, just clarification, just trying, okay. Thank you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So we also just kind of cleaned it up on here and said that, you know, obviously, they need to have a designated representative for each organization, and that they also shall be, you know, in communication with our liaison from the Fairhope Police Department and the City of Fairhope. One big thing that I'm gonna get Shane to come up here and talk about, that we're making changes to, to each and every event that we do, is just to make everything safer and across the board for folks who are in the parade, as well as our spectators, so if you want to come up and talk about a few things we've got on B.
Yeah, y'all will see on the next couple, this is some of the things we've been dealing with for a little while. Obviously, walkers and parades have become very dangerous. Thank goodness, we haven't had any problems at this point, but there's always that fear of when. So we've started working on making a few changes there. Of the only walkers we want to allow, obviously, in a parade is maybe our marching bands, who we will allow to put like a gator or golf cart behind them to give that safety cushion, to prevent a vehicle behind them from running through them. They already do that, but I want to keep that part in there for the ATVs, because we do have organizations that do bring ATVs in, groups that ride in our parades, and the way things are going, we're trying to take those out, too. Some of the surrounding, you know, agencies and departments, cities are taking those out, due to the fact of, one, if they get away, what's gonna happen? Two, those slow our parades down tremendously. They zigzag in and out and want to talk to people at the barricades, so we're trying to take those out. With that, also goes our float escorts, one of the things we've been dealing with for a while. We've got two organizations that use law enforcement, we've got one that doesn't, and it's generally Boy Scout kids, and unfortunately, that's also a safety hazard. Those kids can't keep somebody from getting under a float. We run into those situations at least once this year, so we want that to be at least 18-years-old or older, just for safety's sake, you know, and it's got to be two adults, 18 or older. They at least can contact their driver and say, "Hey, you've got a problem," or "We need to stop," or whatever the situation is. The kids just aren't much help there for us, and pose another danger there. We covered the marching bands. The start time of the parade, we've got a couple that start at different times, so we put in here and proposed that they all start at 6:45. Next year, we should have all the barricades, and that'll give us a little more time for George and his crew to get their stuff ready, too, instead of pushing them for time. It's not the 15-minute difference from what we do start one of the parades, so we push it back 15 minutes. We gotta set standard time. The old ordinance had in there, too, for all of them to start, I think at 7, no later than 7:30, so we're still moving it up a little bit, but just not as much as what it has been. Obviously, the alcohol thing is, it was already in there, it's just kind of been changed a little bit. Obviously, you know, adding the smoke and vaping and other things on there as well. Obviously, some of that's not safe on the floats, anyway. The throws, we have looked at and tried to change, and you'll see those highlights that are changed in those. The big one that we've gone in and added, because it continues to be a problem year after year, we've asked for the confetti cannons not to be Mylar, and again, this year, we had that trouble with Mylar being shot, and it was shot quite often in some of these parades. But on top of it, even the biodegradable and the paper ones are such a headache for the city crew to clean up. The humidity and the moisture, it sticks, it doesn't come up, it's a lot of work for them. We've even had one of the Mardi Gras organizations reach out and ask that we ban them, and help them out that side, too, so that's why that part's been added in there. And y'all, like I say, a lot of this, we've done just because it will make things safer from our standpoint, so we appreciate y'all looking at them and considering them.
And lastly, I've attached in here part of our ordinance that defines parades, and one thing that internally, I know we struggle with, when folks do come to the city and want to fill out a parade permit, or a street permit, is, you know, what defines a parade permit? Because we have a lot of folks' marches, rides, you know, we've got the Haven, we've got the witch's ride, we had the Martin Luther King walk, so we, you know, a lot of times, we just are looking for clarification on that. I mean, and it would be nice, maybe, I mean, it defines in here, a parade or press session is hereby defined as a march in formation proceeding in an order in close file as a collective body of persons on city streets and ways, so, you know, do we need to clean that up for some of those folks who, you know, the witch's ride, that we would like to barricade that whole ride? The Haven, we did this year, and we had a lot of compliments about how, even though it was like a rainy, yucky day, that folks were glad because of the safety of, you know, dogs and spectators and those folks who were there watching the parade, just like Shane said. We're just trying to make every effort to, you know, make safety a priority each year. So, just looking for input from y'all, obviously, again, we would just like to clean up some of this stuff before next year rolls around, and we're already, I went to a Mardi Gras meeting last night, because I'm actually part of a Mardi Gras Association, and we parade on February the, like, 8th or 9th, so it's gonna be here before we know it, next year, in fact, Tuesday's very early next year. So anyways, just looking for input from y'all, and we'll just open it up if you have any questions for Chief, or for Public Works, or for Shane, or myself. Yes, and we also wanted to, if, once we get through with the parade permit, we would also like to bring up the RV parking as well, just to see y'all's thoughts on that.
All right, but just so I understand this and make sure it's clear, we have been charging $2,500 for a parade fees since 1993?
Yes.
I definitely think we could go up on that, especially since our costs for overtime's gone up so much, but I had a lot of people asking me last year, or this year, about walking groups, and some of those were groups that were hoping to walk in the parade, and some were, some of the organizations have just grown substantially, and they had more members than they had float capacity for, and, I don't know, I've seen them walking in other parades in Mobile, places that didn't seem to be that much of an issue, but y'all feel pretty strongly about the safety aspect of that?
We would rather not have to work one of those if that accident happens.
I understand that.
So, if I may, Council President, did we have any significant problems besides just 30 years of the same, this parade, in any of this, that we could be particular about?
The biggest?
I mean, I know you said something was sticking to the pavement, was there something else?
The Mylar shortened out the, Mylar confetti, shortened out the?
And also, just the safety of having it all barricaded. The cabling doesn't keep any kids back, so that's why the walking units and the folks who are able to like jot out to get throws and candy.
But we now, with that, with that new barricades that we've been able to get through grants, that obviously, I guess are not here yet, but when they get here, we should be able to fully barricade all parade routes now?
Absolutely, and that's why she brought up the stuff like the witch's ride, because this year, you know, we noticed the problem of, you're putting 500 to 700 people on bikes and riding down the street, they're throwing stuff, and obviously, it's not going far, and the kids are running out in between the bikes, the bikes are having to stop, they're falling. It's just, it would be so much safer when we can barricade all that and require them to have it barricaded.
Yeah, I completely agree.
So, would that witch's ride, would that be defined as a parade, and they be subject to that?
By our ordinance, yes, sir.
And then you wonder, will they, then will they hold it here? Because it does have an economic impact, there's a fine line between, you know, charging them, and then, I mean, I'd imagine just putting a barricade out alone would cost, you know, a lot of money for Public Works, but I know it's a quick, it's a quick ride, right, so it doesn't last long, but there's some economic impact, we want to, we don't want to?
They are a nonprofit.
But they do got a procession?
Yeah.
That's what they should not be finding it.
They are a nonprofit.
I'm not insinuating we lower any price for parade permits, yeah, I just, I don't want to?
You asked the question earlier.
Yeah, I was, because I was thinking that we were only getting half of what we were charging, it wasn't to lower it at all, I was not suggesting it.
Yeah, but that, yeah, I guess.
But I also don't want to make the fee so high for something like that, that they go to some other city.
Yeah, so, if I may, Paige, so we have in front of us, because it's a lot, the first part is the 30-year regulations.
Correct.
The black and white, and then in the highlighted is what you all?
What we're proposing to change.
Proposing to change. There was one section in here, it says no political, commercial, ideological statements. Is that something that we can do? I think you can, freedom of speech, can we tell people not to write or express something on a sign? Because I know, I ask, because I'm from Mobile, and I know the comic cowboys, and that's something that I'm just?
And that's, that's actually something we kind of took from what other municipalities had in their rules. We actually didn't have anything in our rules regarding that. And one thing, too, to think about, and Shane and I have talked about this as well, is soliciting, kind of goes hand in hand with that. We, I do know that the Haven, this year, were soliciting, I think, like, the scanning of the Venmo to donate as they were walking on the street, so, things just to think about. Do we want that to be something that they're able to do, or?
So my question would be, not to get into the weeds here, is that unsafe? That's the thing that I would have to ask.
Here's the only problem that we have with that, as they're doing that, especially when it wasn't barricaded, it's obviously stopping and dragging that out, and then it's getting those big gaps, and other people are in it.
So they need to come up with a better form, they can throw out the doggone?
It's how long do you want that parade to last before the next one starts?
Got you.
Yeah, I can see stopping and trying to collect, or solicit during the route can create some delays and backups.
I just want to hear it aloud.
But, you know, I thought, I've got several comments, but I don't think that we have the passes in the next two weeks.
No.
I want to think about all these, I've got notes on, I want a half a dozen of these, but yeah, that was one that kind of jumped out.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with the no solicitation of funds, but the no political, commercial, and I don't mean campaign signs, but I can remember years back, there were some floats that had some celebrities that had gone to prison that year, and they were poking fun at them, good humor, I didn't see any, somebody may take that as political, but I didn't see how anybody should be offended by that. If they do, they need to check their emotions at the street corner.
Yeah, these, I mean, and these, this is all up to y'all, I mean, we were just wanting to let y'all know exactly kind of what we were thinking, and kind of what some other folks surrounding us are also doing, so.
Yeah, I see item H, just known as the Jack Burrell Clause, says candy throws are to be tossed to the spectators and not at the spectators?
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, I saw the notice, the one that whoever brought the suckers with the sticks for the Christmas parade, for the council to throw.
I had candy.
I thought the same.
I threw candy apples, so you got to know.
Look, I think that is very subjective as to tossing it to them and at them, I think you got to play defense when you're on the parade route, you got to be prepared on your toes the whole time.
You got to keep your head on the swivel.
That's it.
Everybody grows up down here knows that, so.
And if y'all would like to, I mean, we can, we're welcome to take y'all's comments and bring it back to another work session, I mean.
Yeah, and I think that some, a council member or two should be in these discussions, just to facilitate, help facilitate these discussions. I appreciate the good draft coming before us and thoughts, that's all you can get them out on paper, and I really liked the way you highlighted the changes. That's, I wish all of the people brought those like that, when we're changing ordinances and all, so I really like that a lot.
And one other thing to think about while we're talking about Mardi Gras is the RV parking. So, we brought that up, I believe, a couple weeks prior to the parade last time, and I think we were just kind of feeling a little rushed to make a decision for this year, so we wanted to, you know, while we're having this conversation, if y'all all want to obviously discuss that again, is that something we want to offer to those folks? I think Jennifer's here with the revenue office, and I think Chief stepped out.
I'm gonna say something very pointed. I wasn't here when this was brought up, so thank you for council for not, you know, changing this when I wasn't here, because I was, you know, one of the ones that helped write this, and I don't know what the problem is. If there's, if they're breaking the law, give them a citation. I mean, I don't think that it's a big to-do, I don't know why staff doesn't want to fool with this, or why the police don't want to fool with this, but, you know, I don't even know why it's even being brought to us to do anything with it. I think I ought to keep it just the way it is. Maybe we go up on the prices, but I, for one, am not exactly enamored with the fact that staff, the police department, whomever's complaining about this, is bringing this to us, because we put this forward, and I want to keep it in place. Not happy about it.
I will say this, I think when we were, when it was brought up the last time, part of the issue, and I think sort of there were two issues, one was, it was, it was sort of eliminating one of our only handicap-accessible parking spaces for parades, and I think that was sort of a driving factor in it, and we were allowing RVs to take up a pretty prime spot for only about, how many RVs did we rent out, two, seven, or eight?
Nine.
Nine?
Yeah, and I'll say, we've also received some comments in our 3-1-1, and so, again, when we brought up all the Mardi Gras, that we were going to bring that parade permit to y'all, we kind of wanted to package everything together. Is there something we need to update, do better, make safer, so like, Jack, we were just basically saying, is this something we want to continue to do?
I think that we ought to deal with it. If we have somebody causing trouble down there, and if we need to find more handicap parking, I'll volunteer to head to committee, I guarantee you, I can find some parking.
Or there was, I think, I don't know, it was Cory that brought it up, or somebody, I think it was Cory, that brought it up about possibly finding a more, not remote spot, but a less prime spot for RVs to be placed.
Instead of killing it.
Instead of killing it, so that, so that there is that prime spot for handicap parking, and that the RVs still have somewhere to go that is central to downtown, but just maybe not in the dead center of it.
May I, may I, Council Chairman? The reason they were put there is because the electrical boxes and the utilities were put there for the very specific purpose of RV parking. When that parking lot was designed, it was designed for RV parking, because they have their, they have the services for the RVs at every spot.
That's what I was about to say, the question is, can we?
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, again.
Does it make sense to put it at the parking lot designed to accommodate?
And if I'm, excuse me, Paige, but if I may, you know, that came up, was options, instead of killing it, win-win situations, and the power was the issue, even when we thought about another location, so maybe that could be another variable that we include in our decision-making, moving that power, you know, as we discuss it.
I think a lot of the reason they were looking at that as the handicapped area is because a lot of our big lots that are in our central business district don't have access to get in and get out that aren't blocked by the parade route, so that's why that, that particular lot was looked at for handicap parking, because it's about 70 spots, and they do have access along school and behind the post office to enter and exit without interrupting or being like blocked inside. Because right now, behind the Welcome Center, you're blocked in from the Bancroft side. We do have parking in front of the library, but it's very limited, so, and every year, we get phone calls about handicap parking, handicap parking, how do we get to the parade route, you know, easy? And, you know, it may be just something we need to look at, like a drop-off location or something, but we do get a lot of complaints that we don't really have enough handicap parking for those folks who are wanting to come down, so that.
One other, just council, I don't know, let's see, when was that adopted, 2019? Another reason that we did that was, what was mentioned at the very front end of this conversation, was the amount of police overtime, and there is a three-night minimum, I believe, right, for the RVs? I believe there's a three-night minimum, and there's?
The first parade, I believe, there's, they can stay one night, I believe, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, and then the second parade, it's a two-night.
They check in at Friday, first weekend at five, second weekend at two, and then first weekend you have to be out Sunday by 10:00, and the second weekend you have to be out Tuesday by 10:00.
So there's a Friday, Saturday night, and there's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, so there's, there's two, two nights, I'm sorry, one, two night, and then a four night, so it's six nights total, and if you, if you took the amount of revenue generated from that, we, it also, when we talked about this, it was to help pay for all the police overtime that was needed during the parades.
I think that came up as well.
Yeah, I think, I think, how much did we make off that last year, Jennifer?
About $3,000, I think.
$3,000, total from both weekends?
And that was what the chief was bringing up as well, it was not covering overtime, and it was actually?
We were actually going in the whole, yeah, we were going in.
Covers more than 20% of it.
Yeah, but it doesn't, I don't know that it covers even what it takes to monitor them.
We'll get any traction here, anyway.
Doesn't cover, the parade fees don't cover, yeah, well, the parade fees cover some of it, yeah. It won't cover, I mean, I think what Paige said is between police and Public Works, we're talking 12, 30,000.
That's per, that's per parade, those numbers that she give you is per parade. $8,000 for us and 14 for George, per parade.
How many parades, sir?
Per parade, three parades. That's 60 grand, 60 grand in overtime in parades.
And this is per float?
That's per, that's per parade.
Parade, and it's three parades.
So one group is paying the fee?
One group?
Well, like, KER pays $5,000 for their parade.
Right now, they're paying $25,000.
They're paying $25,000. So between the three organizations for Mardi Gras, they would essentially pay for one parade worth of time.
Possibly one parade. I thought that they paid for police in addition to the permit.
Just the ball.
The only thing, yeah, the balls are the only thing that's, that's covered, the parades themselves are not.
So it's a, the city's doing that, I mean, it's, it's an economic driver for downtown, but the city's spending some of our money to?
To facilitate it happening, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that's.
Yeah, and we would have to see the numbers, and, I mean, you know, we're kicking around, because I don't have the numbers in front of me right now to make any type of financial decision.
Yeah, I mean.
And I mean, we're taking a stab in the dark, too, as well, I mean, we, we know what our overtime costs are, but, I mean, you know, obviously, we don't want to jack up the price to each of these organizations in one year, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that goes back to what Jack said, as far as even just discussing the witch's ride, I mean, there, there is a cost to us, but there is a benefit to the city as a whole, and that's kind of, cost to doing businesses.
They got hundreds of members in some of these.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that was kind of my point, I mean, what Councilmember Burrell was saying about, you don't want the witch's ride to not do the witch's ride, because it's cost prohibitive, but there are a few organizations that do things like the witch's ride, because it's a benefit for the humane society.
Right.
There would be nonprofits, that you could look at those to do a half rate, so they, maybe it would be a cheaper rate for them, so they wouldn't leave, they would continue to do it.
I think all of them, Mardi Gras organizations are.
Are they all nonprofit, too?
Most of them.
They are not, nonprofit. They don't benefit anything, except you guys who like to go out there, and girls who like to go throw stuff off the floats.
I don't disagree, but the federal government designated them a 501(c).
Four, or seven, whatever.
But there's always the option that those organizations can come before council and ask for, you know, some kind of discounted fees, or, you know, I mean.
Maybe we could have some fee for non-motorized vehicle parades versus motorized vehicles.
And then everybody be like the Flintstones?
And then we'll, KER will pedal our carts around.
Maybe time, based on time, and, you know, the amount of time the streets are closed.
Yeah, I mean, because witch's ride is a short, a much shorter deal.
Yeah, it's about 30 minutes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, not, not all parades are created equal, for police, for Public Works, or for the impact on the city, so you don't want to, you don't want to overburden something that's not like the others, not just for the witch's ride, but for really anything that might come up in the future.
Yes.
All right, well, y'all have given us some stuff to think about, for sure.
Yes, and Councilmember Burrell, we added, or we removed, just for you, that suckers with sticks are a non-allowed throw this next year, if approved.
So you will, you will not be given a bag of those at the Christmas parade this year?
What are they called, the Dum Dums?
Yes, yes.
I mean, God, you could, so.
We had, we had bags.
That was me, and.
Of course you did, you had all the premium throws, man, we had the junk.
What about moon pies made in Canada?
Not allowed, not allowed.
Bring your stuff like peanut butter cups?
Even, you know, it doesn't matter to an ally, or whatever.
That is.
Not USA.
That's right.
I read that. I read that.
Thank you, Paige.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you, Jennifer. All right, guys, next up, committee updates. Councilmember Earl.
Well, let's see. Airport Authority, we got two new members at the last meeting, so they'll, they'll start at the next Airport Authority meeting. Got a lot of interest in ground leases on the east side. Of course, you know, we got the grant with the help of the mayor and the city. We got the grant for an east side terminal. And I think I announced at the Airport Authority meeting, that doesn't mean we're going to have passenger service, but, but, you know, it will help the Airport Authority tremendously. We've got plans for a road. And we, we voted in support at the last meeting to apply for a grant to possibly get some federal monies to help with the infrastructure so that we can market the properties on the west side. And if we can, can do that, you know, we can, you know, be, be one more step towards financial freedom for the, for the Airport Authority. So a lot, a lot of good things actually going on out there. There's a lot of demand. It's just that every time we get a new ground lease and we increase our revenues, we have to build another road or add on to the road to service that. And it's just very, very expensive right now to do that. The REC Board, we have two new nominees. Is that on tonight's?
Yeah.
Meeting? Yes. Yeah, so basically, at the last meeting, it was a good process as well. We had, I think, seven people that had applied to come and speak to the Recreation Board for five minutes each and just tell us why they wanted to be on that. And I think that may have been the first time it was done that way on that board anyway. And that was, that was very enlightening. In fact, I think that we may have nominated one that I know that I didn't know, I don't know that many people knew of, of the person, but, you know, through that interview process, we learned about them and seemed to be pretty, pretty good, pretty good process.
I think it's great that there was that level of interest to join that committee, that seven people not only submitted their name for, but were willing to show up for an interview process to get on that board. I think that's great.
Five showed up, seven couldn't make it. No, they, they showed up, they didn't, they didn't think they were going to be there. Yeah, Cory, they did, they'd scheduled five, but they did all seven show up.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I think that's awesome.
But we had to do the impromptu two, Cory. Well, I think we got some really good candidates and a lot of stuff going on there. Just a really good overall meeting from the REC Board.
Good. Mr. Martin?
Well, a little bit, I wanted to tell everybody, Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board is now on our website for people. They've, they actually met with the mayor, I wasn't there, to discuss their priorities. They do a lot of things for us. You know, the environment is something that is crucial nowadays, so very smart people on that board. But check out the website, it's on our website, Fairhope City Municipality. I think they did a good job. That's all I got, but...
Thank you, sir. Ken Buck?
Just that the Library Board has their meeting in April on the 17th, four o'clock at the library.
Mr. Bennett?
I've got the report.
All right, I will say that the Historic Preservation Committee has a special call meeting set, is it Tuesday at 11:00, Gary, is that right? Tuesday or Wednesday at 11:00?
I think it's Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday at 11:00. Obviously, after the discussion we had last work session with the Historic Preservation Ordinance, the committee is interested in moving forward to get that, something like that done. Obviously, you know, there are some things to work out as far as what that exactly looks like, that the council is going to be comfortable enacting and putting in place. And I think that's some of the things that are going to be discussed at this meeting. Kind of what to put together that, that we can feel comfortable moving forward with. And then, obviously, I think that's the first step in many steps of things to get that, to get us as a certified local government. So that we can qualify for all the things that we've talked about before that we currently do not. So I will, I will update you guys. Obviously, anybody that wants to attend is welcome too.
So this Wednesday?
It's, yeah, a week from today at 11:00.
Okay.
So, all right, that's all I've got for committee updates. We'll go to department head updates. If you've got something, give us your update and tell us what you've got on the agenda. Kim, you're the lone passenger on this side of the room, so you got anything? None? All right, Richard?
Jason went halfway out of his chair.
Sorry, Jason, you were, you were, you looked too eager. I was just going to let you wait it out just a touch.
Just the only amendment item is number 11. This is kind of, as you know, we've got our talent under construction, the funding was to have a, an approved archaeologist on site and we, we had to get this contract in place well before we ever got funded, so it was just a wild guess and...
Excuse me. And we did, we asked for, we did a not-to-exceed placeholder of $10,000. Had no clue what was going to be entailed. We're, we're probably at about 50% of the excavation that he has to be present. Once the excavation is over, then he goes away and doesn't have to be there anymore. So we're just asking for an amendment to increase that not-to-exceed to 20,000 because we are, we're at 50% of excavation and have consumed 80% of the budget. And I did not want to be spending money that's not approved by y'all. So we're just asking for a modification and we are getting reimbursed 80 cents on the dollar on that.
Richard, just real quick, have they, I know, remember when we were told we had to hire them and it's a, you have to, there's nothing you can do about it, you know, it's either that or you can't do the project. But, and at the time, I just, I thought it was a money grab and I thought somebody slipped that in on us when we got that grant. I really do, still do. But just out of curiosity, have they found anything of any archaeological significance?
No, not for what they're responsible looking for. They did find a couple of pretty cool electrical insulators, probably from the first power grid that was put in, but that doesn't qualify for...
Glass or ceramic?
They were ceramic, pretty cool. So, but that, like he said, you want this, this is not something we're going to document because they're looking for Native American, earlier civilization cultural items.
And I even think some art historians had told us that they didn't anticipate, and they were even perplexed as to why, that they just didn't anticipate finding anything there.
Now, depends on what's historic. We've now learned that things 50 years old are considered historic, so are there any antique beer bottles that have been discovered?
I'm pretty sure there have been.
They just wanted to keep it.
It kind of bothered me that I got classified apparently historic a couple weeks ago, I didn't even know it, so...
I'm a lot closer to historic than I'd like to admit at this point.
Because you know it's Jay's favorite time of the year when they're paving the parking lot.
That's right. Every time, every time.
And I did want to take just a moment to kind of update you. As you know, we do an annual paving package and part of the things that we, we come back and report to you is where we're at on kind of the list and going forward. I think the clerks provided you, you can look along on your computer, but right now, you know, we, we always target to spend the money that we have allocated and try to get as many roads done as we can based upon priority and need and safety and factors such as that. I just want to kind of run through these real quick where we are. And definitely, if you have some input or some concerns, let the mayor know because we're going to be perfecting this before we make a commitment to putting together the drawings and contract specifications. Our number one is Bancroft Alley. You may not know it, that is our alley that's behind Honey Baked Hands that runs up there. And there wasn't much left of that alley to start with, but we did because of some redevelopment. Our sewer and water had to do some upgrades. Gas is going to be in there shortly and there's just nothing left of it. And while we were there, we improved the drainage, so the final kind of dot in the i's and cross in the t is to resurface that and, and take advantage of the drainage that's been improved with the hope that there'll be no digging for utilities anytime in the near future. Second one is just a small cul-de-sac, 200 linear feet on the north side of Pecan, just, just west of section. And this kind of got on the list and moved up because there was, there's a little safety issue there that we got to get addressed and resurfacing will take care of that. And it's the least expensive project there. We also have identified Windmill Road, the city portion, which runs between State Route 181 and Thompson Hall. It is a long road, right at a half mile, and it's a narrow road. It's only 18 foot, 6 inches, so we are going to look to do a little bit of widening there. If we, if we gain six inches on the side, we'll get closer to the standard 20-foot total width that we are accustomed to. We have been annually trying to at least knock off a major road in the Fruit and Nut. Last year, we got a Tufer, we took care of Pier and, and Orange. We've taken care of South Church Street, we've taken care of Pecan, and we are recommending that White be next and then Fig will probably be next year on that. Because those are through streets, connector streets to all the sides. We also have listed number five, River Oak Subdivision, which represents four roads. These roads have never been resurfaced, this is original. Aggregates highly exposed and we're getting just a, a pretty high level of potholing in there and maintenance is coming to issue. Number six on our recommendation is Sea Cliff Drive. As you may, may or may not know, the northern half basically is in Baldwin County, the southern half is in the city of Fairhope. Baldwin County resurfaced that road about a year and a half ago and our portion probably needed resurfacing a year and a half ago as well. And with all the activity at the marina, it has not weathered well and we're recommending that as, as well.
Richard, a question about that.
Yes, sir.
And it actually, I've seen it on that street and I can't remember, I noticed it on some other street the other day that I happened to be driving down. When we pave these roads, or actually even maybe when they're, when they're new, and let's just say we put in curb or gutter, I've noticed that people will go in and put asphalt where the curb is, especially if it's the flatter gutter.
The saucer curb, yes.
And, and, you know, and I don't really know what all that does to the, to the water flowing down the curb, but it certainly doesn't flow probably the way it was intended to flow. Do we have anything to prevent people from doing that? And when we, if we repave these roads, I know along Sea Cliff, there's a lot of driveways that have asphalt, concrete, some people have steel grates, it's a hodgepodge.
And that's something we have to look at.
What have we done there?
You know, the, the challenge, especially on the uphill side, the bayside, most driveways immediately depart back to curb and go steeply up.
Right.
So they, they have the tougher transition through that valley curve. And, and they put that in there because probably their car was scraping when they entered and exited. What it does in most cases, it just kicks the water out of the gutter into the street and then hopefully it gets back to the gutter around it. But it, it is a potential safety hazard with, you know, cars with water flowing out on the road and not staying in the gutter line. We, we kind of take those on a case-by-case basis. Some of them do try to maybe put a PVC sleeve in and then pour the concrete over, but it just takes a little bit of leaves and those clog up and, and they're kind of hard to service. Again, generally on resurfacing, we don't go down into that fight and we, we tend to only address those when there is a maintenance or a real drainage problem being created by it. So it's kind of one of those things is that is...
We just look the other way.
Yeah, until, until there's a problem or complaint. Yes, sir.
Do they have the right to go into the street essentially and effectively change the, change the street?
Well, technically, today with the fact that we have right-of-way permit texts and inspectors, that, that if we catch somebody doing that today without a permit, we stop them. But many of these are, you know, been there for a very long time, so. And I, I don't know when Sea, that portion of Sea Cliff came into the city's inventory, but I wouldn't be surprised if there's a lot of those elements there when we, when took that road in, so. So that's Sea Cliff. We're recommending Bayou Drive from Section to Fairwood, just as trying to, that's, that's an important road that serves schools and it, and it's showing its age. Looking at, knowing that we're going to be in a pretty regular cycle with Quail Creek over the next five, six-year cycles to resurface it, it's just getting that age. And it's kind of makes sense to start the front, work your way in. And we're recommending the section of Quail Creek Drive from State Route 181 to what we refer to as where the entrance signs into the neighborhood is because that's where the first change of pavement is. And, and the pavement definitely improves in that area. Idlewild is the last one on the list. This is just the boulevard section south off of Fairhope. And, you know, it is just in poor state of repair and a lot of potholing and, and of course, it services that whole neighborhood and all those side streets as well. And then we have on the listing our parking lot there at Pecan Building. Now that it's become a functioning city facility, the use has really increased and that parking lot is showing its age. Just to kind of look at your, your, your cost estimates and attaching your package there is you can see the inspection reports and, and the field reports on these different roads. And also, we did not pick, we, we bid City Hall last year. The budget didn't work, so it got carried over and rebudgeted, so we have it back on as well. That, the, the Pecan and City Hall are not what we call gas tax or impact fee dollars. These are other funds that have been identified within the budget. Whereas roads listed one through nine, those are funded through the gas tax and through the impact fees that do allow for resurfacing. I do want to share with you just, just some, some realities. I went back and looked at 2018's paving package. We are running about $100,000 per two-lane mile, okay? Now our estimate is in excess of $150,000 per two-lane mile, okay? That, that is in five years, that's a, that's a significant cost change. Here's the challenge. Gas tax income really hasn't gone up other than the one cent that they added, which was nice, but it was only about $76,000 additional than what we were getting. Impact fees, there is no doubt that there are more dollar value of development going on today than we were four years ago. The problem is, it's 1% for a cap, okay? Which I'd imagine that 99.9% of homes that are built in Fairhope today hit the cap. We don't get 1%, we just get the cap. And that cap really hasn't changed much over the years. So those two funding sources are relatively steady, meaning they just, they just hadn't increased much. So the, the story, the moral of the story is, right now, we have about $420,000 in those funds to use for paving. And I just read you a list that has $620,000 worth of estimated cost on it. Now, what we do is when we bid this, every road is an additive alternate project, meaning that, that we say that we can, we can award the bid by, by, by picking and choosing which roads and drop off any that we don't. And last year, you know, we dropped off City Hall and some paving out at Valanta because it just, it wasn't cohesive with what we had budgeted. So the good news is, we'll be able, if we go to bid, to drop out what we have to, to get us within that budget range. But I think the moral of my story is, is today, we're, our, our dollars have remained steady, maybe a little, little increase here and there. Our costs have not been, has well outpaced what the growth in, in our funding for resurfacing. So basically, what we used to get four or five miles done, we're now down to 3.7 and I don't see that trend going the other way. And when you start thinking about Section Street Downtown, it is right at 10 years since it was paved, it is either 2014 that I think it was resurfaced. Section Street's a high-volume road, there's traffic on it all day long, and it has public side street parking. You know, we're going to be looking at a time in the, in the near future, we're going to talk about resurfacing probably Section at least from Oak to Morphe. And, you know, that could be a million-dollar project right there based upon today's monies and that's paving at night and full milling and all the thermoclast striping and everything else. So we've got to kind of be strategic at looking at, you know, how we're going to fund our resurfacing, you know, or, or we're going to fall behind. Right now, we maintain approximately 140 miles of public roads. If you get 20 years out of an asphalt overlay or asphalt road, you, you've done real well. And in, in low-volume neighborhoods, you can nurse a road for 20 years. But that's getting to the end of its lifespan. So if you, you take 140 miles and say, well, divide that by 20, that means you need to be resurfacing seven miles a year to stay kind of in that current and we're, we're hitting right at half that right now. So that tells me that we'll fall behind. And then when you get into really important roads like Fairhope Avenue and Fells, South Mobile and things of that nature that have a lot of volume, those, you know, that's the pride and joy of our city. That's, that's what we, you know, when folks come to visit and, and recreate here, we want to put on the best dance. And they're more expensive to, to maintain as well. And probably 15 years at the max is what you're going to get out of those roads. So, you know, I know Kim has mentioned the ugly concept of a city gas tax, but, you know, we're the only municipality in the county that doesn't do it. And I think that, I remember her number, she said that would produce about $200,000 a year that is specifically dedicated to resurfacing and road maintenance. There is one other city in the county that doesn't do it, that's Prettyto Beach, but they don't have a gas station, so if they did it, it wouldn't do them any good. But, you know, it's something to think about because I live in Daphne, and the gas in Daphne, which has a gas tax, is the same price as the gas in Fairhope. So it tells me that you don't pay more for gas if there's a city gas tax, it's just that the folks selling gas maybe make a little more money on their, on their gallon of gas here. So that's my, my pitch to you, it's something to think about because $200,000 this year would make up the difference of paving all these roads as versus to cutting some off the list when we get the bids open. So, be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor President, I have a quick question. The parking lot at Pecan Avenue Building, it seems to be that we need to expand that somehow, because when I go down there, I've been down there a few times the last couple of weeks, and through nobody's fault, because there's no parking, there's people parked up in the trees and, you know, is anywhere they can find a spot to park? It's just, it's limited parking, it seems like.
I agree, and I think we'll eventually, and I think some of that we can build in-house, especially off of the Marietta Jones Road which runs beside it, there's some, some easy low-hanging fruit there. But the good news is, by, by restriping it correctly, I gained about 16 parking spaces in the same footprint that's there. So we're going to, it's still going to be, I mean, when we're...
So you've already seen, you've already just, in what you were planning to possibly do, and I say planning to possibly do because I have not approved yet, but in what you've estimated, it would, it would pick up 16 spaces?
Yes, sir. Because there's a kind of a dead zone at the end of the median as you're going to the east that is just a big field of asphalt that doesn't have any striping in it, so people, it doesn't get used adequately. And plus, even though this is an engineer's trick, you, if you narrow it down every spot by six inches, by the time you get to the end, you gain one, so, or maybe two, depending how long the parking lot is. So maximizing that's what we're working on, because a lot of those parking spaces are like 11-foot wide, and that's way too wide. I mean, a nine-and-a-half-foot parking space is plenty for even a full-size vehicle, so.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? If you hadn't been out in the founders, they're blowing and going if you hadn't been out there, it's pretty cool, so.
Yeah, Richard, what was the $200,000 as far as the gas tax on? That was on one cent, right, Kim? Because it goes all the way up to four cents. Okay.
That's a cent and not a percent, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And that's the lowest possible, and it goes up to four.
And that's, a big challenge with gas tax, I'll give you two other preaching points, is that, one, it is always a penny per gallon, it's never a percentage of the sale, okay? And here's the problem, if gas goes up to three-and-a-half dollars, usually sales go down, so actually our tax goes down. And the other thing, and for those that are sensitive to this, every time an electric vehicle joins the fleet of cars in the city of Fairhope, that is one less vehicle that is paying, buying gas, that's helping resurface the roads, but the electric vehicle is driving on the same roads, and the equal-sized electric vehicle weighs considerably more than a gas vehicle, thus theoretically, it's doing more damage per mile to the road, but they're paying zero in taxes to...
They're buying electricity from the city.
That's true, okay.
But I don't know if it...
So, and we're going to see, you know, that's going to be, our legislators are going to have to figure that out, because electric vehicles are here, and they're going to continue to increase, and finding a way to replace the loss in gas tax is going to be a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jason?
I have two items on the agenda tonight.
Please.
Number seven.
Okay.
Materials testing, soil testing. At three, at plant three, we're constructions going on as we speak. This contractor is one I got from Richard, it's one that the city has used extensively over several years, so. And number 12. Sludge removal contract for the wastewater plant. The only difference, it went up $5 a cubic yard from the previous contract, and the contract's good for three years.
Is our, you got just an annual, estimated annual cost, did that change at all, or did you keep that number the same? It's not a cap, it's just an estimate, right?
Yes, sir, that's our budgeted number. We kept it the same. I wish I could tell you that the sludge would go down, but we're adding customers every day, so that's not going to be the case.
You said that was an increase of $5 a cubic yard?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Jason at this point?
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyet?
Hunter, I'll come to page, yeah.
I was this close, I had a dum-dum in my purse, and I was this close to bringing it up to the stage, but then I refrained, so.
Throw it, throw it.
Okay, I have item number six for, to, for a professional services contract for Pirate Productions for our Fourth of July show. That's a turnkey show for our fireworks, if y'all have any questions on that.
Same group we always use, that we've been using recently.
Correct.
Certified and all the things they've got to be. Okay. Thank you, Paige.
I just want to point out, sorry, I have to do it, but just point out how much we're spending on fireworks, and, you know, we're, you know, we get a lot of return for that, same as what we have to spend for police protection, I think, during these parades. There's a, I think there's a definite return, and I think that the Saturday of the, when you have the men's parade and the MMOR parade, I've heard a lot of people say that's our busiest day of the entire year. Have you heard that, Mayor? It brings in a lot of revenue. The point being, you know, at some point in time, you can't, and I'm the one to speak, I know, because I know what you're thinking, but that, you know, you have to look at the sometimes unmeasured return on some of these events as opposed to just what the direct costs are.
Or that's the return not to the actual city, but to the businesses in the city.
Well, that's to the cities.
Oh, my God, and it sells, it's...
That's right.
I mean, it's, you can't, yeah.
Well, then there's the trickle-down of all that.
That's what I'm saying.
The trickle-down of all that. The Reaganomics of all that.
Yeah. Star Wars.
Anybody else? Anybody else got any items on the agenda?
Yeah, I just have item number 10, which we talked about at the council's work session last time, so if you have any questions, or I know it sounded like y'all were okay with it, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thanks, sir. All right. Hunter, you got, Jeff, you got something?
Go ahead.
Yeah, come on, Jeff, come on, Jeff.
I've got, we've got the second hearing of the zoning case for a final adoption, it was a very easy one. And we also have two resolutions for acceptance, Overland Village and North Hills Phase Two. North Hills is very, our standard. The only unique thing of, that you might see in your staff report is an exhibit instead of a plat for Overland Townhomes, it's not a public street, we are only accepting the water and sewer there for maintenance and the bonds that go associated with that.
Okay. Any issues with either eight or nine?
Nope.
Okay. All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Montgomery?
Lisa's not here, so I'll go over item 13. This is for software to manage agendas and meetings and resolutions, just kind of streamline that, that whole process. One of the things that I, we spent about a year looking at different, different software. We looked at about three, three different packages and decided on this one. The one thing that stood out to me that I liked with this package is that I can, instead of streaming to Facebook and YouTube, which we do, and we can continue to do, they have a service that we can stream to and have the agenda within, kind of like a picture-in-picture with the, with the video, so they can follow the agenda as they're, as they're watching the video, which is nice. This is not just for the council meeting as well, this is for, for all committees that want to keep try, or, you know, automate their process of creating agendas. So this starts with the employee, there's a whole workflow, workflow that's built in that starts with the employee, that can go to finance for approval, to the mayor, to council members. However, we want to make the, the agenda item flow, we can, we can do that to make it to the final agenda, to be published to the website. And I don't even have to be involved, the council, the clerks, with the push of a button, goes to the website automatically, which is, which is nice, just speeds up that whole They, they'll take our existing agendas, our existing minutes, and they'll, they'll convert it over to this new platform for us, and by doing that, OCRs, the documents, makes them searchable. So any, any characters that are in our current agendas will be searchable, so items will be easier, easier to find. I think that's, and the other thing that stood out with this product too, is they, they have an integration with MuniCode, which is good for the resolutions, I believe, that just a push of a button, it goes from, from the Civic Clerk product to MuniCode, which makes it nice, I like that integration. Hope I covered that okay, any questions? And it's, it looks like it's about $2,600 under budget.
I just, I don't remember that budget item. I guess, was it in, was it in the city clerk's budget? Whose budget was that?
It was in general fund, general government under IT, I think, actually.
Okay.
Or maybe under, I can't remember.
I didn't, I didn't recognize it. Counsel, do keep in mind, it'll be $12,200 per year thereafter. You need maintenance, or where is the... Just renew the license on us?
Well, see, they, they host it for us, we don't keep it on-site, it's, they provide the platform to, to store the documents and store the meetings and the video and everything else.
Is it an absolute must-have?
Is this an, no, nothing, no, we've been...
The luxury?
All right. If I, any more questions? We've got, you know, I'll be here during the council meeting if anything else arises.
Thanks, sir. Just one thing I said earlier that is incorrect, is the Historic Preservation Meeting is the 28th, which is Tuesday at 11:00. All right. If we don't have anything else, we'll adjourn the work session and come back at 6 o'clock, get started, and get out of here.